Good evening, it's August fifteenth, our city council meeting. With that, have the roll call.
Mayor Iquist.
President.
Councilor Burkner.
Councilor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Cruz.
We have an agenda in front of us. Couple. Positions or corrections. On page three. Under item J. Personnel, there are two action items for resolutions, so we'll bring those back. We delayed putting the signs in, electronic signs until after Gold Rush, so we'll come back to the September, October. One of those two meetings to take care of those two resolutions. And the other item is under new business, we want to add. No, we want to move. Decommissioning the community wastewater systems. To. Special meeting.
We were gonna do this part of the special meeting.
Oh, actually, we're deleting that, right? We're deleting that whole thing, right? Mike?
Right.
Yes. They're reading that whole thing.
That's removed.
Delete the update on the new business.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to remove resolution. One and two under J Personnel Committee, Community Center.
Second.
And also the action item under. Under new business, update decommissioning wastewater treatment system, so those three amendments.
So that will be removed?
Be moved out, yeah.
Okay. Second.
Maybe a second. You have a discussion? Right, now, seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Votes? That's approved. Next item is our public forum. The three-minute time limit, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to say business and must adhere to data privacy rules. And no employees' names may be used. Please expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium and state your name, address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once, you will be timed, beginning speaking with a green card that staff will show. The yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left, and the red card indicates you have reached your three-minute time limit and must stop. With that, if anybody would like to speak, now would be the time to come forward.
Unless you have an item on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, unless you have an item on the agenda, of course, that's. Need to change my wording.
Assistant.
Second call for public forum.
Did you want to say anything tonight? No?
Just to listen.
Okay.
And third and final call for public forum. Done, we'll close public forum at six thirty-five. In your packets, you had a. A letter from Adam X. One fifteen Fifth Street Southwest. The gentleman is here. Everybody get a chance to read that? Letter. Joe, I've got a question for you. In packet?
I did.
Okay, so it's into Fifth Street Southwest.
That's right.
And. Did the sewer project go up to basically the furthest west property line, which is Mark Stulp's property?
Uh, it did.
So that's, he's, they're asking for rock, but that's going to be paved, is that correct?
Uh, Fifth Street will be repaved just like it was. Um, I think Adam's property kind of lies to the north and west. And we did run water main through that area.
Okay.
Uh, there's water main running north-south through this right-of-way, um, and so anything that we disturbed, of course, will get reconstructed. As part of the project, so they'll get new, or get what is there will get dug out and replaced.
So.
In the blue squared areas, that will return to gravel, or was it paved?
Well, mine is not in color.
He probably gets the two tracks that go through the right-of-way.
The blue squared area.
Yeah.
Is there any? Yeah, not looking to be constructed.
This is what he's talking about here, but if they disturb, when they went through there, that'd be rock, but. So I guess, Joe, would you just? If you haven't talked with Sonny, could you just prepare a response that the staff could send back to Adam about what's going to be? Reconstructed with gravel and. And maybe he just uses a lot of dirt and reclaimed material there now.
Right, right.
Okay, let's do that. Second item is a request. That Sonny put in our packet about a gentleman. Coach of various football teams is requesting the use of city land between the two buildings. Between us and Public Works. For football practices, three nights per week between August fourteenth and October twentieth. And he's looking for space.
I don't see any issue with it.
Well, I see several issues with it. Just the damage of the turf with. Eight weeks of practice. That's twenty-four practices, three nights a week for eight weeks. I think there's going to be a lot of damage done to the grass.
I would just imagine it wouldn't be as much as Gold Rush.
Are they, are they kids, little kids, or are they?
Yeah, little kid.
Or are they older kids with cleats?
Little kid.
It was like fifty-sixth grade, I think.
They'd be wearing cleats, I would think, yeah.
But that doesn't make a big difference.
I think they'd be wearing cleats if they're fifth and sixth graders.
Well, you can stipulate.
I wouldn't see an issue.
What's that?
You can stipulate no cleats if that's.
But. I, I guess, to Carl's point. I think Gold Rush had probably put more tax on that property than young kids with cleats.
Depends on the weather.
Gold Rush depends, everything, everything depends on the weather, because that's the soggy mud pit down there when it gets, you know, so we can make it weather-dependent too.
But I think it's more traffic.
Sixth grader ain't gonna have cleat on, they're gonna have shoes with, you know, they're got stuck down the bottom where, you know.
Which is crazy, yeah.
They ain't clean, no, a cleat going, you turn off and on a quarter inch, a half inch, a two and a half inch. They're just like a. Rubber shoe, you know, they don't, I think it probably gets a lot of use with cleat on, because they're steel.
My question is, we've got soccer field, I think it's over across, and the other park over. In Riverwood Hills area. And, and I just wondered whether they're not using the ball diamonds, you know, are they going to continue to use the soccer, because the end posts are set up for the net? I just didn't know.
But there's no parking.
I was just, I was just asking.
There's a lot of dirt been disturbed with the treatment. The lift stations.
It seems to be still pretty good for what's going on over there. I, I just didn't know if, if that's going to be active for the soccer, or. Who controls that, or what goes on?
Well, and remember, the soccer nets were set up here for a while because of all the construction that's going on over there at that park. So.
So there's.
I'm sorry, you had other concerns.
He didn't say what time either, just nights, he said. Did he give a time? Couple hours, one hour? So there's no water, no restrooms. Damage, I don't know if we have a liability waiver. You know, when they have Gold Rush, we have liability insurance, I know if he's going to have. You know, he hits a rock or that's in the ground, we know there are several holes in the, or divots in the land that we deal with every year.
I don't know if it's any different than any of the, I mean, all the city parks in Rochester.
Yeah.
Are used for youth football all the time.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't know how it's any different. We carry, we carry a liability for the whole city, for our parks, for anybody using our parks, I would assume, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see the difference between that and a park, it's still city property.
Well, I think they're different, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, I, I asked that question before the topic, okay? Just to, I mean, if it's a city park and it's open to the public all the time. You know, I think cities typically will allow sporting events like that. To be different, I didn't, I wasn't sure that that was actually part of the park, that land adjacent to City Hall. So if it's just, if it's a special request and they're not, it's not open for kids to use on a daily basis, it's not open to the general public and they're asking to use city-owned property. Then I think you have it, that there's issues with that, and you'd want to. But I don't think that's the case here, I think it's just a public park, a public green space.
Right.
Right, because we set up the soccer nets for anybody to use, so it'd really be the same thing. And the hockey, and the basketball court, and the hockey rink at the winter, all the same.
Make a motion.
Right.
Approved, uh, land between the City Hall and Chad Tracy's for football, or for. Football or whatever, practice, whatever they want to do, I guess.
I second.
Do you think we should tie anything to any? I mean, with Gold Rush, we have matting of grass, is the worst case.
You know what, though?
Oh.
If they came down here five nights a week and wanted to play for two and a half hours, you're going to raise the kick them off. It's city property, I mean, they're just being nice to ask. I mean, I, I, I think we ought to stand up for our youth. You know, rather than send them, Rochester should be in the streets, I think if we can keep them in our town, we're a lot better.
I think that we ought to change it from August fourteenth, because this is Gold Rush this week, so we're okay.
They kind of, yeah, we talked about.
Oh, I didn't even think, notice that, yeah.
Yeah. Your conversation's determined, in case that. Community Center would be closed. Probably during that evening after four o'clock. So it's not available to them.
I mean, we hear so much, that thought never crossed my mind. But, yeah, I can.
But I think that's, they're not requesting, they just want to use the land, so the building's going to be locked after four, so.
But we, do we have, do we have a party for this park? We don't, that's just hitting me right now, we have it for all the other parks, why don't we have it for this park? We have a note about that.
Well, and I don't, I don't know that we consider this a park, or, I mean, does it have a name?
We have a, we have a basketball court here, we have a swing.
Right, over here.
Yeah.
But it's kind of gets.
It's community property, city property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
We don't have a name for it, right?
I mean, nobody else is using it otherwise, so I don't know if we should have a party over there all the time and pay for it.
Well, no, I just mean the park part, you know, if we actually do have a park here. It would be. Anyway, it's a hush.
Okay, well, the building will be closed, so that's, I don't think we need to put that into the amendment, into the motion, so. Are there any comments? Seeing none of those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Aye, votes? It's approved, next item is a request.
I'll just kind of an FYI that. Male blood crime, they've got their mobile units coming back online, so. We've selected Monday, October fifteenth.
Yep. Sounds good, uh, three motion for that?
And they do it all the time, right?
All right.
When it's available, and I try to, and Renee is historically kept her price.
All right. Incident report, FYI, I have that for you. Next item is the water and sewer. Over eight. Four and sewer minutes in there. And Joe, you want to give us some updates?
Yeah, lots going on as usual with the sewer project, but first, starting with wastewater treatment facility. Uh, there is a, um, a monthly update for all of you, uh, you get a sense as you look at that. That the wastewater treatment facility is really coming along quickly. Buildings are getting finished up, counters are getting placed, cabinets are being installed, uh, fencing and the perimeter is going up. A lot of the process piping work is complete. Um, we'll probably be paving within the next thirty days out there, parking lot, a lot of the flat work and concrete simply is all done, streetlights are. Up, um, things are moving along pretty quickly, um, so that's great. The things that continue to be a concern. Uh, we continue to monitor, there is, by the way, a construction coordination meeting next Tuesday, ten o'clock here. Uh, anybody that wants to, to come, uh, you're welcome to come, and of course, you're always welcome to come up to the site. Take a tour, ask any questions that you have. In terms of things that we've been. Talking about that are of concern. We talked about last. Month, the motor control centers that are being shipped from Allen Bradley. They were supposed to come in, in late July, they did not, uh, they subsequently pushed the ship date back to August eighteenth. So that means that they would be here like the last week in August, and that delay cost us a month in terms of. The startup process, so we are still continuing to move down the path of. Installing the temporary power, because the other. Piece of the puzzle that isn't coming is that, um, electric, the switchgear at the front end of the. Facility. Now, here's the power from the transformer to the different components and the MCC stuff, so, um, we are going down that route. Um, the contractor's planning to do that, uh, the delay in the. MCC delays the installation of the temporary electric panels that will power the facility. So that means that our commissioning essentially moves from September to October, and our startup moves from October to November. Um, so we kind of detail that within the sewer and water. Meeting minutes, if you know, I'm sure you all know that, but those are really the things to watch, when we get that MCC. Uh, delivery is a big deal. We've had our dates, delivery dates extended twice, we're hoping it won't extend a third time. I'm cardedly optimistic, things will show up and we'll, we'll be able to start to move forward on that piece. That's not to say that the contractor has been, you know, kind of. Hands down on that, they are doing. Work on all phases of the project, especially electrical, that's the main component of work, they're pulling wire and conduit and prepping for the. Um, delivery of these machine control centers, um, and so they're as far ahead as they can be at the point when they finally get here. So, um, doing that, hopefully, we can maintain the schedule that we're on, um, but really, the MCC delivery is the. The main thing that we should all, that I'm watching, and that will impact the schedule. Um, aside from that.
Joe, can I interrupt you just for a minute, just, just a reminder that with regard to that meeting on Tuesday. If you plan on attending that, uh, please let me know, in case we have to post it at current form.
I'll be attending.
And you as well?
And I'll be there, okay, so we'll.
And what time is that one?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
It's our, it's our normal monthly meeting. And so Stab is always here, I, I will be here, of course, uh, construction staff is here, and all the subs, including the electric contractor, uh, will be here. So it sounds like you'll post that, just in case?
Okay.
Um. That's what I have on the wastewater treatment plant, we've got a few other items down the agenda that we can get to, any questions? Uh, by the way, gas is going in out there, I see that the gas company has their, uh, Mastech installing, their subcontractor installing gas main along the. East side of Minnesota Avenue to the wastewater treatment facility, uh, they said they'd be here in August, they're here in August, um. So that is moving forward, that's good. But any questions, things we want to talk about out there? Like I said, happy to walk through it with you if, if people have time and, and interest. If not, move on to the next item, uh, next item is a sanitary sewer, uh, collection. System of the water main improvements, that's Fitzgerald's contracts two and three, um, Fitzgerald continues to have two crews and three crew, utility crews in town. Uh, so, uh, they have had one crew, um, just. North of City Hall, working on Fourth Street and Fifth Avenue, uh, they stopped work there. Uh, but they've made pretty significant progress, uh, we also have a crew on. East Center Street, um, that crew will be continuing, starting Monday, across Minnesota Avenue. To West Center Street, so Minnesota Avenue will be closed probably Monday and Tuesday. And possibly part of Wednesday next week, hopefully, it's a two-day crossing like the last one was, really is dependent on how much rock they hit there. Um, and how much issue we have with utilities, okay? So that we also have a third crew, or Fitzgerald has a third crew, they're working. Out on the east side of Minnesota Avenue between Second. Second Avenue North Southeast and Cedar Point Road, and just before Gas and Go there, uh, they're extending some sanitary sewer up to. Uh, Cedar Woodlands Three. Uh, there is a water main scheduled, or water main offset scheduled, so that means we'll have a water main shutdown and. Um, Gas and Go and, um, a couple other businesses will be without water for a better, a good chunk of the day. On Monday or Tuesday of next week, we'll of course get notice out to them. Uh, water main at the offset is just, there's a vertical conflict between a gravity pipe and the water main, and so we. Have to physically bend the water main down below with. Offsetting it, so we can get the gravity sewer through there, so that, that's scheduled for early next week as well. Uh, so that's really the three crews, the other things. Happening, uh, Ellingson has been here. Uh, they are the contractor that is, that is in charge of installing the grinder stations and the small diameter force main on the individual parcels. Um, they have completed almost half their work, so, um, the. West Center Street, uh, First Avenue. Or First Street Northwest and, and Ninth Avenue Northwest, that area, most, most. As well as Stopps Co., most all of those parcels have a grinder station installed. And most of them, uh, with the exceptions of the ones where we hit rock, or the contractor hit rock and they have to be open cut, have force main installed. Um, none of the systems are live, obviously, the wastewater treatment facility is not live and can't be live. The contractor actually pulled out to, uh, do some other things, uh, a different project, they'll probably be back in the next three weeks or so. Uh, to complete the other. Uh, parcels on the, really on the east side of Truck High Fifth Two, uh, and then hopefully by then. Treatment facility starts up and we can start tying those systems over, abandoning the existing cements and, and those types of things. Um, the last big update that we have is the contractor has a lot of streets to reconstruct. Um, one of the things that has been kind of holding them up is availability of rock. Gravel, crushed rock. Um, the contractor has their own crusher, they have their own gravel source, they have, um. And the delay really with reconstructing those, some of the streets is they didn't have material crushed and prepped, and so they've been crushing material over the last week. Uh, and we're expecting after Gold Rush that the street reconstruction process is going to, uh, pick up pretty quickly. And so that, that type of work will be happening, uh, we also have some workhorse paving to do over in the. In, in Northwest, as well as some of the other streets that were reconstructed last, last year, and so the contractor's got a lot of work ahead of him in terms of. Uh, rebuilding those roads and, and getting things paved, as well as, uh, moving forward with utility work, but they have made a lot of progress, I think they're pretty much back on schedule. As to where they projected they would be. In terms of pipe installation, they've had a couple of pretty good months, and if you look at the pay requests. It reflects that, I think this month was about a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar pay request, so they've gotten a lot of pipe in the ground. Um, and they've made good progress from that perspective, so, uh, lots going on, um, that will continue, the contractor has suspended work. Um, largely for the rest of the week, they'll be in tomorrow to basically. Blade and, and clean up boulevards and streets and add a little rock where they need to, uh, address any saw spots, clean things up for Gold Rush in the downtown area. Uh, and for the rest of the week, they'll predominantly be doing. Pipe testing, uh, and work outside of areas that will, will bother the, the traveling public, and of course, that, we get to tell, so. That, that, uh, that puts us in, in good shape, and if we get, I think, by Wednesday night, we're going to have a rain-free event, and that will help a lot. Um, so. Lots going on from that perspective, uh, there will be a, uh, resident update that'll go out Thursday or Friday of this week, I'm supposed to be off on Friday, so I'm going to try to get it out on Thursday night. That's the update, questions? No hearing done, uh, move on to. Contractor notices and milestones substantial completion dates, so, uh, Sonny and Mike and I. Had met a couple weeks ago, not, last week, and talked about the fact that the specified completion dates. You know, we were supposed to be starting operation for the treatment facility for low flow, just for the grinder station facilities on about the Fourth of July. Um, that didn't happen because the treatment facility is not operational, there are some issues with. Uh, delays on control panels and lift stations, and then, of course, electrical things that we talked about, and so both contractors really didn't meet. Um, some of those milestone completion dates, and so what we did is essentially, uh, Mike drafted a letter to the contractor. Putting them on notice that, yes, indeed, those contract completion dates weren't met. Um, and that the city does indeed have the ability to withhold liquidated damages based on the contract if you choose to. Um, based on our discussion and my recommendation, the letter also says is that the city is not withholding liquidated damages. Um, because the number gets pretty significant, it's, you know, on the wastewater treatment plant, it'd be over a hundred thousand dollars a month. Um, that seems with the five percent retainers that we already are withholding, uh, and the fact that the contractors are both responsive and moving forward. Uh, counterproductive, and so the letter essentially says we. Aren't going to withhold, um, liquidated damages at this point, but that doesn't relieve our. Ability to do so in the future, if, if that's what they call some things necessary, so that letter went out and we included kind of a little note on the bottom of both pay requests. Referencing that letter, and so I had some conversations with the contractor. That did go well.
Did go well?
Yes.
And just, just for council's reference, that footnote is on the bottom of page seventy-four. If the copy on page seventy-three for Stab's pay request does not include that, because you signed that after.
Yeah, we just got the stop pay request on Tuesday, right, Monday?
It is Tuesday.
Monday morning, yes, yeah, so I, actually, I do, I noticed that. Monday morning, yes, yeah. So I, actually, I do, I noticed that, and I did print a copy out if anybody wants to see it, but.
But they're basically the same as what, what appears on page seventy-four.
Yeah, and these aren't impacting us. We're not getting charged for anything being late because of this, are we?
We aren't, no, it's the, yeah.
And we're not from a state perspective?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just kind of saying, you know, we're following along, folks, and it's, it's.
Our eyes are on it.
Part of the, it's part of the process, uh, yeah, we're, we're paying attention, they're paying attention too, um.
And we're still making our payments once due on the twenty-first, was it, is Monday?
Yes.
So that, that's kind of what we've done, and that's the recommendation that we have is to go ahead and approve the pay request. Uh, and note that those, uh, notice letters about the completion dates and the decision not to withhold liquidity damages, but, uh, you know, reserve that right, uh, for the future exists. Um, that kind of feeds into, are there any questions or concerns about that? That feeds into item number six, the wastewater treatment facility change order number three. We have been talking about change order number three for, it's gotta be three months, right? Um, I finally have an executed change order number three for you to look at. Um, I just got this signed by the contractor today. I'm gonna pass it out, I don't, not asking the council to take action on it. I was hoping that if we have a special meeting later in August, maybe we could take action at that time, but at least I could hand it out, um. I could at least hand it out and, you know, provide you with an update, give you an opportunity to look at it, and, and if you have questions, by all means, tonight, if it's okay. And I, I certainly answer them. Um, the change order was, uh, it came with everything essentially in the change order. And I don't mean to take up a bunch of time on it, but I would.
You don't remember, we ain't gonna bring this. Every meeting, we ain't gonna bring nothing extra, and it's gotta be before.
Right, this is on the agenda though.
Well, we didn't get it till just now. I mean.
Hey, we don't have to talk about it.
It's time and time again, we go over it, all the time. We'll have to do it at our next meeting. I mean.
We'll take a look at it. It's time, there's no action tonight, so we should have my eye for now.
Let me roll into number seven when we're setting this next special meeting.
Right. So you wanna pick that one, Sonny?
Um, just, um, that we, we issued, you know, my memo, uh, we issued, um, the RFQ, price proposal, um, went out to four firms. And three of the firms responded, one withdrew. We had two out at the site visit, um, and then, um, subsequently, um, one withdrew from that as well, and the third one, um, the fourth one, actually, that was late to the game, has, um, I'm still waiting to hear rationale on that as well, but we do have one really, really solid response, um, that will be discussed at a special meeting um, that we want to schedule either for next Monday or next Thursday with the two dates that the water and sewer many had indicated worked for all of them, and this would be a joint meeting, trying to expedite this so that um, as you do interviews and review of information, we can expedite this, because even though we have a delay in project, that doesn't mean that on our part we're not still moving ahead and, and looking that out. So, there were, um, two requested actions. One is to schedule a special meeting, which will include, um, a discussion of change order number three as well as, um, authorizing staff to negotiate a contract with the selected firm after that special meeting.
You said there was a fourth one that was late to the game? Is that what you said?
Yeah, um, the fourth firm was, they received a RFQ on July fifth. That's at the bottom of my first paragraph.
So they didn't receive it at the same time as the others?
Correct.
Is that why they were late?
Correct. Because I ran across them as a fourth alternative. And, and they responded, they would take a look at it.
So we did decide which is, uh, which worked better for council, as far as the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, Monday or Thursday next week? Any preference one way or the other?
Or we did it earlier, I would just, I would need to leave by seven.
So the twenty-first would work for you? Not the twenty-fourth?
Unless we changed it. What time were the water and sewer thinking, just our regular time?
I think that we're kind of open to you, but historically, we've kind of moved all of our meetings to the six-thirty slot with the exception of.
Oh, you guys twenty floors is open for me.
Uh, like the twenty-fourth.
And if you wanted to do it five, five thirty, does that work better for you?
The one, Jim's a worker, I guess. I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait late at work at night. Like Thursday night, I'll wait to work.
I, well, I try me out by four, but most times it's fives.
Well, Dana works as well.
I'm home by four thirty.
Okay.
Usually.
So do you wanna do five, five thirty?
I would say five thirty at the earliest. Five thirty?
Yeah.
On the twenty-fourth?
Maybe the six-thirty the next day.
I'll check my calendar, I'm pretty sure it's. Yeah, I can make that work.
Thank you. And then the second one was, um, to authorize staff, which would include, obviously, Joe um, and Kane to to negotiate a contract. Again, subject to, uh, final approval by the council, but, but again, you're the biggest share of the negotiation piece.
So one question I have, Sonny, so are we saying really we're only down to one contractor, one company for this? I what's our alternative, uh, other, stretching it out? To get others, I mean, we're kind of backed into a corner.
Well, I, I would say, I would be more worried about that, Council Richards, if, if this wasn't a really solid company with, um, a long history. Not only in this area, but in the region, wouldn't you say, Joe? Regionally, they're, they're biggest.
I, I get that. I'm, I'm just thinking of, of cost and competitiveness. Are they gonna give us, and maybe this is for that meeting, are they gonna give us everything that we're asking?
I have, um, I have bound copies that I would like you to leave with tonight of the response, so that you have that to look at for me.
Okay.
And of course, we had the, um, the RFQ and new packets as well. If I might say too, I know the mayor had indicate, indicated sticker shock as well when, when it first came in. However, in looking at the numbers that he and Joe had put together.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, that it was still less. Now, there are some pieces of their structure, um, and we can talk about it more at a special meeting too, but, um, part of it is that one of the goals that we had as a city was to find a partner who was also willing to embrace bringing our, um, employees into that as well. So knowing that that will take some time over time, but, so they're trying to, um, accommodate that as well. So looking in that, but, but, uh, so the number that they came in with was less than the number was. And there are some pieces that are still negotiating.
So it included, yeah.
Well, I, I believe if they're working on that, trying to include that in there.
Carl, do you have a comment?
Huh? I would ask Joe if he knew what an A was. An A or operator?
They have their own employee.
A operator.
Not an A operator, they don't have an A operator. They got a guy who comes in twice a week, does the samples, what's got an A license. Robertson is not an A operator. Yeah, so that's what I was just asking Joe if he knew about their kind of other options. To be, uh, he says it's pretty impossible to get an A.
One of the things that, that I have advocated since I came here, knowing that you had this new facility coming on board, is um, I'm about risk management too, right, from the city's perspective, and because it's a new process and don't have the credentialing on our staff. Um, I, I have advocated consistently that we don't source it for the first three to five years. Um, and, and this does do that. With the onus on them, obviously, we're still the owner, we still have, we're not uh, without obligations to oversee that, and I have faith that Kane is gonna do that, and I know this firm to be, um, responsible and accountable, and you will see them at every council meeting.
That you worked with this firm before?
Yes, I can, yes.
Just a great comment, we can continue the discussion too on, uh, the twenty-fourth. But, uh, we talked about sticker shock, but at the same time, the estimates that we put together back in twenty-twenty-one, uh, for, um, operational expenses versus what we received in the proposals within five, five to six percent of what we were estimating back in twenty-twenty-one, so, um, it's that's good to know, we're that close to what we thought it would be. Now, there's inflation and everything too, but still, we can, just kidding. I'm not looking for a warm fuzzy feeling, but the point is, we did kind of, that's, the figures that we worked up back then, we reached, went into a cash rule analysis too. So there was some effort put into these, determining those higher costs, uh, with our user rates and conservative ten holds per year, that type of thing, and went into cash value analysis and cash growth analysis.
And, and we have no history, right, for them to work with either, or even for us to work with. I mean, it's all projections.
So, or maybe we have it, because I've not had a chance to review all of it. Some kind of a, a matrix that shows us this is what, what we want, and this is what they offer, to understand what we wouldn't get versus what we want or need.
We'll have that for you.
So no doubt, we'll be talking in more detail at the twenty-fourth.
And then B, did you wanna take any action in that?
Yeah, discuss that.
Um, item B, uh, authorizing staff to negotiate?
I definitely, okay, I would say it can be worked. So with that, in the proposal, I don't know what page number it is.
Twenty-seven.
But there is a schedule of dates. Uh, was that written into that? Proposal? Uh, when we were gonna do the evaluations, interviewing, negotiation timeframe.
That was page forty-four, which was in the original. We've obviously backed.
Yes, that's what, page forty-four. There's a series of dates, some of these have, um, obviously slipped a little bit for various reasons, but so there is some timelines for negotiations, agreement review. Um, and some of these dates may slip just a little bit, and white man overall, especially is, is moving out to, um, November. But, um, those are days that you are talking people services about.
Right.
Interviewing. Questions.
Right, and we've scheduled, they will be coming then on the twenty-fourth at five thirty that we talked about, so that kind of, um, is pushed back a, a little bit, and then, um, we had expected that we would need a special council meeting on September fifth. I think, um, if, if council will allow staff to go ahead with the negotiations and stuff, we can still have a, uh, have a contract ready for review in advance of the regular council meeting on September nineteen. But then approve it. Does that give us enough time, Joe, if we're approving it at the September regular meeting? And that's maybe part of the negotiation as well. Or you think we'll still need a special meeting between, um, September fifth and September nineteen?
Depends on what role the council wants to play, I guess. I won't know, do you want to?
If you can, please.
Said it just depends on how, how much of a role the council wants to pay play in the um, contract review and negotiation with that entity, I suppose.
Well, I think that, I think that would be up to the administrator in the standpoint of, we have our meeting on the twenty-fourth. That time, we'll get some feedback on understanding what people service has to offer, ask any questions. But beyond that, I think it'd be better to have a one point with our city administrator doing the negotiations.
And as I said, I would certainly.
To the administrator. I would, I would suggest Kane and Sonny vote.
I was just gonna say, and I certainly would look to input from Joe and Kane and Mike as well.
So we're looking at staff, just like what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. Can I make a motion, be authorized staff negotiate the contract? With your word, he is described in A above, which is the people's service.
It is gonna be with, with Joe, Kane, Mike, and you for it, right? Is that?
I'll be the lead person, but yes.
I wanna make sure they're all, you know.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oh, same sign, that's approved. Um, next item is a company, Camping World site expansion regarding a septic dump station. Do you want to start the explanation, bring to the water and sewer minutes at five?
Page fifty?
So I did review the Camping World site plan, um, and, uh, one of the things that Camping World, uh, is proposing is the septic uh, dump station, uh, that would connect to the sanitary sewer system. And so, uh, within my August third letter, to the city, I kind of detailed my comments on the, review comments on the site plan, and, uh, the first comment really deals with um, that septic dump station, and you know, there's, the, the big question is, you know, we don't have a history doing this, we obviously don't have a sewer system, do you want to be in the septic? Want to be in the septic receiving uh business? Um I kind of list some pros and cons within that letter and you know, if we do decide to. Uh receive or accept uh septic from Camping World or any other entity, I kind of. Uh laid out some um recommended conditions. In doing that, and so we brought this forward to Sewer and Water Committee. Uh last Tuesday evening, and at that meeting, the Sewer and Water Committee. Uh voted to recommend to the council that we do indeed want to accept that septic. Uh from Camping World and they agreed with the conditions that I uh included in my August third letter. With the addition of I, they'd asked that uh twenty four seven surveillance be placed on the septic re- receiving station. And uh made some recommendations in terms of um the number of ERU that we would um. Expect to receive from them equivalent residential units, because there is a. Uh. Plant investment and truck sewer availability fee that would be calculated based on that as well as a monthly. Uh utility rate. Um that would be impacted by that, and so those three. Or those things are kind of in- included within the recommendations, and I think there is also a two thousand dollar annual fee. Uh just kind of for administration of that piece of the puzzle that was included in my letter recommendation. Recommending various conditions, if if indeed the council wants to follow sewer water. Sewer water committee's recommended.
And with that. A recommended motion was used to three ERUs, I think.
Yeah, ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, I believe, off of that one.
So that that water and sewer recommendation or action was taken was on page number nine. Um as number two.
So um with that, I would make a motion. That uh we approve the Camping World. Septic dump station. Per the conditions of the uh letter of August third that Joe stated. Indicating three ERU ERUs. Twenty four seven surveill- uh surveillance video. Is that all the details I, sorry, I don't have any minutes here in front of me.
Yeah, I just say all of the conditions set forth in that August letter.
Okay.
Just like the, just like the resolution in the.
On page nine. Because and it's noting that um Camping World sewer fees can be superseded with any future commercial.
Well, I guess I'd just like to discuss the risk that Joe talked about, and if we're really. Being as we're brand new baby sewer system, are we really, are we really excited about putting our system at risk?
It's a good point, and we.
And and we have another RV station right next door that's probably going to come and ask us for the same thing. So we'll probably have one more, and we have an RV. Sales place on the other side of town, so they're probably going to ask for it. So I don't think the risk in the ask ends here, I think this is just the beginning. And I just wanna make sure we really do think about that, wh- when we, we're brand new at this. And if it's really a good job or a good idea to do this right now, or. Maybe we have a whole lot for a bit, I don't know, is it normal to for camping sales places that have a dumping station? Is that a normal thing?
I don't have a camper, so.
I don't, I mean.
And our water and sewer, we 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 talked about that, the risk, and but at the same time. Um the American or Tilly's RV, they dump directly each individual. Um dumping station with a um rental plot that they have right now, so they are dumping directly. Directly from the mobile unit into the sewer system. They're not going to a holding tank or anything like that, it's just, so it's just like. They're doing it over the RV park. Uh going into our septic system. Each individual, there's no holding tank, that's my understanding.
Yeah, what they also discussed too on that was looking at the other cities that came up, and it was Rochester and also Pine Island. That that are accepting it in their systems now too, I think in that discussion we had.
Pine Island doesn't have an RV sales.
They have a dump station, though, that they're accepting stuff with that, so.
The only thing we don't allow is dumping at the treatment plant.
Rochester allows, they they've got a dump station, treatment facility.
I don't know, I think next month we'll probably have the other place asking for the same thing, I just think it's a. The precedent, that's for sure, it's it's willing, we're willing to set it, I just wanna make sure we're willing to stick with it.
And this is part of, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, this is part of their expansion onto the. Old illusion site that they purchased, so it's kind of that.
Sure.
Bigger, broader thinking.
Yeah, so in the same station, they have a propane filling station and. They've got a water service to clean things up with, so it's 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 convenience for users.
Makes sense.
One of the conditions is Camping World is to keep a log of their discharges, including the um. Source name, address, volume discharge data service, and submit the log to the city semi annually, so there is some. Type of documentation on it too. Which is different than we have from Tilly's, because they they grab each of those slots. By the month, by the week, by the day, that they have like Christian septic dumping, so.
I'm uh hesitant to, and so that's why I wrote the conditions to be fairly.
Well, and did we address, now that you bring up Tilly's, did we address Tilly's?
It's not Tilly's anymore, though, it's the American Travel.
Did we address that? In our.
I don't think so.
We've talked so much about.
Not, yeah, it's not much in the code.
Right.
And they haven't made any changes that would.
I would say the volume is gonna be. The RV park is gonna be less than uh like Camping World would be dumping in.
Right.
Just because of the volume of. RVs going through Camping World versus the.
Is it something we we should should address in our code, campgrounds?
Um perhaps, yeah.
We drafted a pretty extensive code. And I looked at a lot of sample ordinances to to adopt that code, we spent a long time drafting it and. Honestly, RVs never came up in anything I saw, so that might be. Unique door and all go, I suppose.
It can't be.
Well.
Or do most, or do most RV parks have holding tanks, even in towns?
Some do. You know, this, the camp, the campgrounds would have a similar.
Right, the campgrounds are usually on the country, this is kind of a different story.
And they do have the ability to, you know, they could. Put in a tank and then pump that tank every other week and then truck it to somewhere. And they would prefer not to do that, because it's costly to do that, and so. Uh you know, there's a balance there that I kind of point out with.
And Tilly's is just planning, American RV is planning, sorry, to just tie right into our system, so.
They do tie right into the system by gravity, yeah.
Individual.
No, one connection.
One connection, that goes, okay, got it.
We are also looking at existing business that we have in town as well, okay, and that's that's. A portion of what we have for NOCO for business is Camping World and and Hilltop. And so do you restrict them and and in a way, maybe have them go look for other places or. Do you accommodate them and look at at that for the growing business that we're gonna be having in the future? I mean, all of those things were discussed when we talked about it at uh at the meeting, so.
So, well, obviously, one of the biggest differences is that we're getting some. Some fees from Camping World to do this too.
Well, right, but like Joe pointed out, it's modest financial return for the risk and and the staff time and. So.
Just because we, excuse me, just just because we're, this is our position, we don't know if Camping World will accept it. Camping World may say, no, we don't want that, we'll just, we'll pump our own tank and send it to Rochester. That's the alternative for us to.
Yeah.
That's why I put the conditions on rather than say, yes, we just look at some financial.
Have we gotten any feedback from them, did they, they must have saw, they saw the letter, obviously, did they? Send anything to you? I haven't heard anything.
I have not heard anything.
I struggle with going against what the engineer suggests, I guess, in this situation, the person that's the most familiar with the. Facility and what it can take and what the risk is. I I struggle with that.
Are you going to? Are you going against it, are you saying we shouldn't do it? Is that your recommendation?
Yeah, the recommendation was.
My recommendation, yeah, let's do it. A bit risk averse too. But, you know, the system, you know. I would be fine, shouldn't be.
I don't like probably, we're dealing with this, that's a terrible word when we're dealing with.
The truth is, is none of us know what's gonna be dumped in there, we have no control over it, right?
Right.
Just as we don't with a restaurant.
Well.
A toilet can only fit so much.
It could be grease, it could be all kinds of stuff from a restaurant that's going down there.
You've got a consistent resident, a consistent user, you know, here, it could be a user from. Any part of the state. At any given day, you know, and. I mean, there's risk there, but um you mitigate that risk and the system deal with it, people do it all the time. Um is it headache? Yeah, it's headache. You need more headaches.
I mean, what does Kane think, I mean, if he's going to be learning this, but I mean, maybe this is something we bring to the people that are we hired to hide, to run. Isn't that?
Good question. I know um just Dylan on the Water and Sewer Committee. Dylan's last.
Yeah, Christopherson.
Christopherson, thank you, works with Rochester system, right?
Maintenance supervisor.
He's the maintenance supervisor, so and he has in our. That he disclosed in fairness, um but he had a, you know, a concern about. In terms of what any RV user could contribute to. Um a dumping s- station or service. Um but then also even in a household, you don't know what's gonna go in.
Every manhole is open for.
Yeah, anybody could open and dump whatever they want down a manhole. Yeah, so, and that's in the city, no matter where it is, so.
And maybe being protective of this baby we've created, I don't know.
Um I could just, I having been at the meeting, I can just tell you, there was a lot of conversation about it. Um extensively about pros and cons and.
It passed unanimously when it passed. The sewer.
I'm sorry?
They said it passed unanimously, I think, out of the, out of the sewer.
Yeah, it was a, it was a decision to make the recommendation, there's no objection to it, so I think that's. That's was the result of the um. Conversation and and the voting on the recommendation was unanimous, so.
Would it otherwise comply with the utility code as we currently drafted?
Yeah, I think so, it's just the utility code doesn't speak to how we would. Deal with. You know, some of the policy issues with it, you know, how do we? How do we charge it, how we bill it, how do we, are there any surcharges for it? Kind of put in there what I would do. If I were to approve it, so. Change the, change those conditions or recommendations too if you want, but that's, that was mine.
But I think, I think the Water and Sewer Committee accepted all of your recommendations, including bumping it up to three. ERUs. Um and then adding a couple.
Yeah, the surveillance that was in there was was an important one too, so you can at least keep track of what's going in there. And the screen also, that was in there for the one in screen.
And the acknowledgement that these fees could be. Separate from whatever is adopted in the fees for commercial.
I know, the only thing that came up in there too is the question was five percent. Uh increase per year, and I don't know if we ever decided about that one.
I I think it was just included in the condition, so when you accept the condition, that was. What and what Jim's referring to is I recommended that we had uh. The. Fees that were assessed to the public on an ERU basis for the plant and for the. Um truck sewer, and I recommended that those fees be increased by five percent. From. Two thousand two to two thousand, or twenty two to twenty three. I think that's what.
It is, beginning in in twenty twenty four, yeah.
Okay, so I would um. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve. The septic dumping station with the conditions and both in the letter and was stated in the motion. All of them, favor, signify by saying aye.
Second, I'm sorry.
Signify by saying aye. Approved. Um if I may, um. We have a very important and informative fire department and first responders. Um item to discuss. Uh right after that, we have an action on a resolution of approving a partial right of way vacation for Cedar Point Partners. With the council permission, I'd like to pull ahead. Uh that resolution and the discussion. For those people that are in the audience here. Anybody object to that?
So you wanna pull, correct me if I'm wrong, item H.
H.
On page three, we're gonna pull that up now.
Good, thank you. Phil? Want to come recording, just if you have any questions? So we have resolution. Page sixty eight. Sixty nine. Seventy one is the resolution. Remember, Jim, you wanna speak to this? Resolution and the recommendation.
Uh yeah, we, I heard, you wanna go ahead and speak first and. Let him go ahead and speak first, so.
Sure, right, Bill?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, I vote twenty with WSE Engineering. And I speak on behalf of Cedar Point Partners who own the property adjacent to Cedar Point Road southeast. And they have asked for a beta application to vacate a portion of this irregular shape. Wide right away that Cedar Point has from the south side, the center of the road. Be able to construct a dedicated uh driveway to service. Their future restaurant building and one other ones with um grocery trucks, grocery trucks and that exit over the vehicle or. Traffic within the development. And if the vacation was approved, this property goes back on the tax rules for sale. We've looked at a minimum amount of land that we ate here. At least so easy, eighty five feet of right away from the center of Cedar Point Road to. Uh. The vacated portion of right away, the uh there is a staff report in your packet. Prepared by the your planner that recommended approval, based on the criteria that is listed there. The condition that we provide whatever necessary gas maintenance there is. For existing main lawn and roadway. And also if we need to maintain the drainage, she's more willing to to do that. And we would work with the city engineer and. Providing the easements to, uh, to handle both of those utilities. Um. The planning commission met last Thursday unanimously approved the requested vacation. And we respectfully request your support of that. Uh, motion to approve the vacation, and if you have any questions, I'd be. Okay, answer them, right, just one other item we're moving, going to. Great plan, site plans, et cetera. Uh, for the development of first phase of this site, which is the restaurant on our side. Access roads off of the road on the east side. And, um, creating out paths for another building under this problem, so. Uh, Mr. Guthers here along with Diane Osmond. Father, daughter, that's going to be running this restaurant. Right, questions for them?
May I have any questions for Bill? Thank, thank you for your time, all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, as P and Z, we went over everything that there was, and unanimously approved what was going on, and, um, the condition. Of approval for to vacate, uh, was to maintain the drainage and utility easement, um, that we had just, he just discussed on that for the property. Um, also, we went here and, and the finding of facts is the Cedar Point Partners LLC owns the property. Uh, Menorah Oak identified as B I D number eight four point two zero point one two point zero eight zero two eight nine. Uh, number two, the right of way Cedar Point would be the north side of the property, which is much wider than typically necessary, at about a hundred and eighteen feet from the center line. Uh, of the street, and we were discussing. If we needed as time went along to be able to have a right. Or excuse me, a left turn lane that would be coming down there to get back onto Minnesota Avenue. And it would give you enough space to be able to have both of those that were in there. And so number three, Cedar Point Partners LLC request to vacate. A vacation of a portion of the right of way of flooding the north edge of the property thirty-two feet, uh, side. Or should be thirty-two feet wide at its widest point, um, as you looked at on the survey. Prepared by W S E. Uh, Massey Engineering and survey dated six nineteen twenty-three. And number four, we also talked about a gas line that's underneath there, and, and there is an existing gas line, other utilities within the proposed right of way. To be vacated, and there were reasonable and necessary to maintain the drainage utility easement in favor. Uh, over the vacated right of way to the city. And so with that, uh, we thought that, uh, the proposed partial vacation is reasonable, and we approved it.
If they'd like to make a motion for the resolution?
I make a motion that, uh. Uh, we accept the resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. Uh, dated August fifteenth.
Take a second.
One question, just a. Measurement question, is there room for sidewalk, like, in the future, is there still room for sidewalk, if that's something that wants, needs, we want in the future, it's a long way.
So. The existing right of way is a hundred and eighteen feet, a typical right of way would be sixty-six.
Okay, so there's, there'll be room?
It's steep there, um. If there was ever a desire to fit a path or a sidewalk in, there's probably room to, to do something like that.
Good question. Any other comments?
Just one, I, I have one good thing I noticed, uh, if I might, um, just a clarification perhaps even, that. The applicant would. Draft and record the easement. I'm assuming. Not explicitly stated in here, but I'm assuming that is acceptable. We've got a template, Bill, that I could give you for that drainage utility easement, I can send that over to you, if you can execute that and then. Get it to Sonny to execute and then, then report it, I think that would.
Thank you.
Work.
So you wanna add a second condition of approval, is that?
I don't know that it's necessary, I, what, whatever you wanna do, I just. The owner is indicating they're. Willing to do it too, so.
Right. I, I always like to document things.
Yeah, I think, I think we, we should, so it's documented.
Okay, so condition number two. Mike, you wanna give it the lead?
Number five, I have not looked at this, so. Um, is that, well, the point two you said?
Something like that.
Each seventy, we're gonna add a second condition of approval.
Seventy.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, you mean?
On page.
Something acceptable like the drainage.
Yeah.
Usually we, we, I mean, anytime we do that, like with, uh. Any kind of approval, something like that, you would put a deadline and, you know, it must be recorded by a certain deadline.
Okay.
And then typically I'd put a lot of different. I'm not gonna. I mean, I'd have to, to do it the way I like to do it, I'd have to redo it, so I'm not gonna. But I would just say to have to do it by a certain date.
Okay.
And, and usually I would say record it, you know, record the easement by a certain date. In a form acceptable to the city, something like that.
What's a reasonable date, Bill?
Sorry?
What's a reasonable date to record that easement by?
Um.
The approval is evening, whether the next thirty days. The easement that, like, two weeks, two weeks.
So, let's say, October fifteenth, just play it.
September fifteenth, or.
Right.
Well, doesn't, uh, doesn't the council have to approve the easement? What's that like?
No.
Doesn't the council have to approve the easement?
Isn't that what we're doing?
Yeah, but we don't, I mean, we don't have an easement, we have a statement that there is going to be an easement.
Sure, well, no one. They've given us a survey exhibit that. Illustrates the easement. We know it's a drainage utility easement, and it's gonna be on our form, so.
Okay.
And it's reviewed and approved by.
By, right, so usually they don't come back for.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, okay, I, I guess, I usually I'd like to have it all in the same packet, so the easement would be attached to the resolution. To sign and record the attached easement as exhibit A into the resolution, so it's all clear, all done at the same time. I don't think you have to do it that way, though, so.
Vote on it, sure, it's part of her.
Yeah.
It's there before we sign it.
I, I think you could just vote, do a separate vote too to authorize Joe to approve and Sonny to sign the easement, that's what you wanna do. But then you're, you're delegating to them to do it, which is fine. Best practices, it's all in the packet, and it's all, everything are pre-done, it's.
September thirtieth? That good?
Yeah.
In a form acceptable to the city. I guess that's a really friendly amendment.
Hold on. Uh, you, you accept that friendly amendment?
I accept that friendly amendment.
One second. A second. So what, uh, offer the room?
Here, here, I course.
Aye.
Captain Phillips.
Aye.
Council Burden.
Aye.
Council Richards.
Aye.
Council Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Something for joy, right?
We're getting ever closer to food. Um, yes, on this side of.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go back to our, um. Start back to E on page sixteen.
Any, anyone else for me tonight? I think.
All right.
You're getting out of it way too long.
Not at all. Happen very often.
Thanks, Joe.
You're excuse.
You're excuse.
Thanks, Joe. All right, um. Fire department. Guess we don't have a. Report. If there's an outdoor burning fire on the thirty-first, and they'll sign it August eighth. If you have a. A new member, Austin Sizzle. Make a motion, we approve Austin.
A second then.
Comments? They're done, all those in favor, sign if I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Approved. Fire, first responders. August seventh minutes are in the packets. Five city sixteen township. A lot.
Um. And now you know why we were reworking that agreement.
Yes.
So that it's.
Is there a timeline on that agreement?
I should have it to you inside.
Um. All those, we have. Oh, one, two, three, four new members. They're passing approval.
I'll make the motion to approve. Where did the names go? Austin Sizzle, Danielle White, Dustin Numball, and Mariah Lumen.
Second.
Comments? They're done, all those in favor, sign if I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. F Y I, Patty Brent Rucker, Holby Letteck, Jen Rand for computer E M R trading, so that's great. Great news. Let's see that happen. All right, next item is a discussion, um. Best to leave that discussion. Or we can just start in general, we have three questions there. Um. This is someone, you know, we're looking at some new vehicles, and, um. I think the, um. First responders is looking to. Give, be given some guidance, I guess. Of, um, how to move through the process and what we're looking for. Uh, when it does come to council. First question says, what information does the council need to make an. Informed approval decision outside of detailed specs and quotes? How does the city want to pay in procurement bid process?
One question I would have. Um. When Johan answers here, um. I know for emergency response vehicles. Lots of times they have a company that searches for the best. The best deal. And I believe. Johan could answer the question in terms of outfitting that. Is that Johan a company of its own? That. That the organization handles, or the company that. That we go through, can you talk to that a bit?
Sure, so the quote, I don't know if Dan, did Dan put the quote in there for you from Fire Safety USA? So there's a couple of parts to that, first one is, um, the. F two fifty, um, crew cab that we're looking at, um, where's their state pricing on Ford, Chrysler. Um, Chevy, Dodge, right? We selected a Ford, because we have Fords in our, in our shed right now. And we're familiar with that. Fire Safety's familiar with that. We get state pricing on that, so that, that's the, that, that's the price that the state gets, that's what we want. Um, so, there's that portion of it, then there's. There's a couple other parts to it. The other part, one is, um, there's a cap that we're gonna put on, they call it a space cap. Basically, it's a. Compartment container that sits on the, in the bed of the truck that opens up, it's all lit up, has compartments that we can put our bags, meds. Backwards rehab unit, everything in there. Um, and. There are a couple companies that do that, Space Cap is probably one of the premier, the best ones, that gives us the best options. Cause you can configure it, just like anything on a vehicle. Your vehicle has forty options, a fire truck has forty thousand options, um, Space Cap doesn't quite have that. Um, so we can, we can put it together how we, how we see fit, you know, how we do business, how we have our go bags or our first in bags. How, where we've got our rehab unit stuff, where we've got, you know, do we need our backboard, our skid, our, you know, Stokes basket, our scoop, things like that. Um. Other parts to that would be, um. Emergency lighting. And, um. Radio's communication, um. And the other part would be, uh, striping, um, the wrap and striping, make it look like the rest of our rigs in the, in the, in the fire hall. So that's included in that, those are the, those are kind of the, the big, the big parts, we're going to, um. Move everything that we have in the current rescue one, the ambulance. Onto that, so we don't need, we're not purchasing. More safety vests, or things like that.
So do you, do you have something itemized on this?
I don't.
You know, the vehicle versus everything else?
I asked him clarity for that, so that's who the, the salesman is for, um, Fire Safety, and he didn't, he was not able to give that to me. Unfortunately.
I guess, so, I think maybe you answered it, and my point is, it's not like. We have to go out and get all these different bids. We know based on dealing with Fire Safety USA, they do that and get the. The lowest cost bid.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, you guys don't have to do all that, or the city doesn't have to, right?
Right.
And you guys may have to do things in terms of equipping it. So the other question I would have, then if. We do this, is there a plan to keep? The one that we do have for redundancy, or maybe on the other side of the highway? Please, there's that.
Good question. The, the current plan was, would be dissolved, um, so we could recoup some of the cost of how much it's worth. Ten thousand, maybe? Twenty thousand, maybe, pardon?
What year is it?
It's an O one.
You're old, man.
It's slightly old. That's true, right?
So, um, when you talk about the state aid, or the state, um. Host, that's just for the pickup, right?
That's just for the pickup. Yep.
So. And, you know, what council likes to, please correct me, but council, I believe, likes to see multiple quotes. Especially for high ticket items like this, with public works. We've done Skid Street order, we did a price comparison across the board and, um. Like, we get our, uh, pickups, uh, from Carl's Chevrolet in, uh, Ankeny. Uh, and they get state bids.
Yep.
Um. So I would, uh, encourage you to reach out to them as a second quote. Uh, they do, uh, outfitting of all the highway patrol cars and maybe other, uh, emergency vehicles too, so for. I just, another item to get a quote, I guess, but we would like to see a couple, two, three quotes, I would think.
Sure, the, if we, if we ask him for a bid on, on a Ford F two fifteen, it's gonna come back as the same price.
Yes. It's just a matter of outfitting it.
That type of thing is. I don't, I don't understand your question.
Well, I'm just asking, if, if Carl's can outfit the same thing. That Fire Safety can give you, we're just looking for a second quote of this package.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying of the space cap, like the, the.
Yeah, everything that would be in that.
Striping and the.
On a chef truck versus.
A Chevy truck versus a Ford truck.
We're looking for a Chevy truck, we're looking for a Ford truck.
Well, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, he's not asking you to perglue what your preference is. But just in terms of. Comparison purposes, wanting to. Um, cause the city's paying for it, right, so we wanna make sure too that, that the dollars are in line.
Right, that taxpayers are, like me, um. So you want us to get, right, all of us, all of us, really, um, so you want, so you want us to get a bid for. A Ford F two fifty. Which we have. And you want us to get a bid for.
I would encourage.
Chevy equivalent.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a way that, that we're looking.
But I'm gonna ask you one question, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Why are we going away from four-wheel drive ambulance?
It's not four-wheel drive.
The ambulance isn't.
No, I know, no, but why are we buying a four-wheel drive pickup, if we got somebody laying on the highway? From a car accident, you're gonna have to lay there until an ambulance gets there or something.
Good question, really good question, this is something that we have talked about ad nauseam, um, within the department. You know, we don't, on one side, we don't transport.
Right, you can.
That's, that, that's not us, right? Um. We do utilize the back of the ambulance occasionally, right, we look back on a hundred and seventy-one calls we did last year, and we used it five times. Okay, so we're.
Which of those five people?
Right, and, and most of those weren't required, required, um, we could have put them in the back of a crew cab pickup and treated them. Um, so that was, you know, that's, that was kind of our, our discussion, do we need the big backend or not?
Well, I see my son laying on the highway with a broken neck and two broken shoulders, and I was tickled pink when Pion came and picked him up. Until Lamb, or helicopter got there to haul him in, so, I mean, if our NOK was gonna be paralyzed from not being able to do it. I mean, I think it's something a guy should look at, five times, one life is too many.
Right, no, I, I completely agree. Um, in that situation too, we, we do have the opportunity to put them on a backboard, you know, and.
What are you gonna do with them?
Right, we can, we can either put him in, in the back of the, the rig and get him, you know, and be tight, if at all, right? Um, we have a rehab tent that we can always put up there too.
But the reality is probably that. We're, our proximity to a full-time ambulance service is so close. Then by the time you, by the time our responders were able to assess. And figure out, can this person be moved at this time with what we have here, they're, they're going to need help, and it's going to need more than just the people.
That's correct.
Originally got.
Many, many of clinic ambulance services is getting paged at right about the same time we are, so.
And we can't transport anyway.
And their whole time sitting in their ambulance, you guys are working, have to go get the ambulance and get there, so often they can be, you know, especially on fifty two.
There, there are other options, so you can go the ambulance route, right?
There's gonna be a whole lot more.
And you're gonna spend three hundred to four fifty thousand. Um, you can go with a, kind of like a. Modified, um, they call it a light rescue. Um, you can have those where you can walk through, you can have seating, you can have, you don't need to have the entire backend of the ambulance. Um, that was discussed, and that one comes in around. We had, we had trouble trying to find something that would make it for us, because uh, because of how we want it configured to be able to seat three people, plus be able to. You know, treat patients within it, but yet make it not so big as the ambulance, make it not so boxy, so we can get places. Um. And that, we thought came in between, well, they said anywhere between two fifty and three fifty. So.
Yeah, I think too, the, the four wheel drive has been an issue for what you do in the township. And right now, you don't have access to be able to have a four wheel drive. In the winter time going, it can be a little bit. You know, so I think that that's important for.
So they do make four wheel drive ambulances, that's your point, they do, up north, absolutely, there's a ton of them that have four wheel drive ambulances. Even, even like. Um, rescue, like um, snowmobiles.
So if, with those small amount of money that we'd recoup from that ambulance, would it pay to? I don't, storage is our issue, right, like we don't have the building capacity to keep both, most likely. If we did, that would be another option on the other side, especially because you're not going out of town on the other side, there's really no, there's not much. There's nothing, it's all this way, right?
It's all to the, to the.
It's all to the east. So the best option would be to be able to have another hub over there and keep that ambulance.
There's no reason we can't keep it around, I mean, otherwise, other than we're paying insurance on it, um, we're paying to stock it.
You just can't keep it in Public Works building.
Yeah, I don't think Kane would really care for that.
So, did you have any discussions about a Suburban?
So we did, um, we talked to a couple of the different agencies around here. Um. Casson, Casson Fire and Rescue, they do first response too, they have a Suburban, and he said, don't go with a Suburban. Because with your Stokes Basket, with your scoop and with your backboard, you can't put it in all the way. They have to have theirs at an angle, and it's, it's awkward to get things in and out.
That's a full size, it's not a Yukon or something, that's the Suburban.
No, it'd be like a Yukon XL or a, or a Suburban, same, yep, unfortunately, not enough space for, for that. Um, Stewartville, Byron. Dodge Center. Um, Manorville, they run, they run with pickups. With something similar to a Space Cap or something configured like that. Because of the four.
So good on the calls, typically, is it two people that go out? Is it, do you need a four door?
So, two people for sure. It'd be great if we had more, um, a lot of times, actually lately, we've had, we've had four to six. Which is good, our numbers are up, you know, we've actually talked about maybe possibly limiting it to four. Depending upon the type of call that we have. You have an MCI, if you have a multi-vehicle accident like we did the other day. Four patients, good to have more, more hands, right? Um.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you did too, you'd be restricting yourself down the road for what would be there, you know, if you had, that's a good question, I just.
Good question, absolutely.
We've had two years, two people, or how many long have we had this current one, you know?
Yeah, I will say that, that the ambulance does give us seating for the seatbelts. Or six. So with, with a four door, number of crew cab pickup, they give us seating for five.
I mean, I like it, I think every meeting I've gone to, this has been a point of discussion, and everybody is kind of on the same page about it. But I do think maybe hanging onto the ambulance instead of selling it for that tiny little bit. Wouldn't be a bad thing, if we could. Find a home for it.
Yeah.
On the west side.
Okay.
Just my suggestion.
Not in my driveway. Jim's driveway is.
No room in my shadow.
But I did hear that you guys do want an itemized bid from Fire Safety, right, I've got that down, and you want us to get a bid for a Chevy pickup. Equipment.
An equivalent.
Same, yeah, same.
Okay.
And I, I think Kane had all that information to get it from.
And I, I think it'd be good, and I don't know if Carl's does it, Chevrolet and Ankeny, but I'd reach out to them. See if they do it. They do get state bids, just like Fire Safety does.
And I always, just from my perspective, I always like to be the one drafting. The RFP or RFQs, so that, so that, and having them respond on our forms, so that it's. You know, comparison is made much easier.
Sure.
So the, the Fire Safety USA, that is a cooperative purchasing alliance, right?
I mean, they work, they, yes, they have state bids, they have the state bid option there, yes. And we belong to two actual um, cooperatives. Okay, so it doesn't cost us.
So, so yeah, if you can get. Two for sure.
Money was lost. For the fire department, have you guys ever found that, you know, that ended like fifty, a hundred thousand misappropriated someplace?
Somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that'd go a long ways in, on a truck.
Yeah. But we gotta find it. Lost somewhere.
If we don't, we gotta get an audit or something, in that place, in some place.
Yeah, we have to have an audit then. Um, but with that said, do we have a timeline? So if we're, if we're talking RFPs.
Sure.
We need to throw a timeline on it to make sure that you have everything that you need for it. And that it.
Well, I, I think that's important, but I think we, we probably haven't talked about the elephant room yet, is the financial, how are we gonna pay for it?
Right.
So. In your quote that you had on the packet here from C, CNFG. You showed as an example, a down payment of thirty thousand. And an amount of seventy five thousand at a particular rate, for three terms and five terms. Um. So what is your thought about the down payment, is that from your funds or? What's your thoughts?
It'd be great if it was from that fund that we can't.
Well, I think.
We can't find it.
Yeah, that, yeah, that has to be phoned.
Yeah, that we gotta come up with that.
Yeah. You can only bear to you guys.
What, what I wanted to go with, with that, with that, is that there's financing, financing options, we don't have to throw. All of the money that we have, or, or pull out a CIP or whatever, we don't have to throw it all at once into it. For, for a three-year term, we're not spending that much of, you know, our taxpayer dollars um, on, on a loan. Um, just like we did with um, Engine One, right, it was a. Forget how many years that they financed it for, but I think it was. They paid it off. So, you know, there's always the option to pay it off if we have the funds available, but just that, it's, it's an option to finance.
Right, that's. I mean, we, we have CIP money, and that's, we're good to be in that position.
Right.
At the same time, we need to protect that position too. Uh, we don't wanna get ourselves, and, and that, my concern is, with our startup of our plant, our wastewater treatment plant. Some of the cash flow analysis was to use like a hundred thousand from our CIP into that to help us offset. Some of the operating expenses this first year or second year. Um, and that's all predicated on the number of homes that we started, we conservatively said ten per year. But we know there's some very large pieces of land here that will, over the next year or so, could generate quite a few homes, um, if everything goes right, so. So we're, at least, I'm kind of sensitive to how much CIP money we use, other than right now, we use a hundred thousand in the CIP, so.
Right, and that, and that's why, and that's why I brought the, the financing option up, just because we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, and we can hold them closer.
And that's, and the other interest is, the other interest rates, I would, if you haven't reached out to People's Energy Cooperative, I would reach out to them. For low interest loans, and maybe you have.
Uh, but, no, no, I just, I just put that in there, just, okay, just for, I think, the example, you know, I think we need to, I think we need to better.
There's grants, there's our, grants are available for us, for replacing um.
That's, that's the weird thing, because we don't qualify, I, we mentioned that at the budget meeting, because we don't transport.
The legislation has written that ambulance services, transport ambulance services get reimbursements.
But Kim Hicks was working with you.
She is.
To see if they can get.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Which means by twenty twenty five, I think, is when she said she would, like that legislation, she would, you know, bring that legislation.
Things right now, and that's so much.
Right.
Well, you have an elected official here, so, no pressure, but. That, yes, I'm sorry, the one other thing I wanted to mention on that um, the four twenty five fund, remember, there's. There's, we're talking about different entities, the fire department, this is talking about first responders.
Just first responders.
Which, I don't know that first responders has contributed anything into.
First responders do not have a relief, have a relief association, they don't.
Right.
They also don't have.
Any means of, any means of contributing to that CIP.
So really, that money that we're, we were talking about that.
Hundred or hundred fifty.
A hundred or hundred fifty that is somewhere, couldn't be used for this. Is that?
It, it could be used, it could be, absolutely, it was donated to the city.
Okay.
The first responder truck goes to all the fire calls anyway, and uh, well, not all, but. Most structured fire.
Structured fire explosion and gas leak.
Fire fire rehab, so I don't know if that. We, we have a lot of intermingling of all the departments, so it. Some of the.
Right. And one, that's one of the things that has made it a little bit. Um. To untangle that is because even um. Trying to work through that, and I'm, I'm gonna say it's not a hundred and fifty thousand, because we've, we've. What was the last number, we've talked about this in terms of reconciling.
Twenty seven, but that's how much? Hundred twenty seven, I don't, I just, I, that's not to be quoted, but I do know it's.
It's there.
It's there.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, there's not a hundred and fifty thousand that's missing or not.
That's somewhere, somewhere in there.
Don't, yeah, don't be, don't be throwing us under the.
We, let's just say, we know it's over a hundred. And we need to.
So is that available someplace, so they could use it?
There are funds available, yes, we are um, untangling that. Um. But I can tell you, it's not a hundred thousand.
I mean, there's nothing wrong, you know, where you stretch these payments over five years or ten years, you know, that's very manageable.
Absolutely.
So, and I think that's probably what we'll be looking at, that's just, the other question, the other point I was gonna make is maybe see them. Uh, they may be. Uh, they have a lot of grant writing experience, and they may know of some potentials and. Um, I've worked with Sunny and, and uh. And see to just to get something out there in front, to see if there's any possibilities for first responder equipment. Um.
Okay.
So I, I see this, going forward, I guess I see this as a process of getting those quotes, start talking about some financing. We're doing budget workshops now, so we should be trying to finalize this by. End of September.
I think so.
Cause that's when we need to stop, that's what, you need to get our preliminary budget for the city. Which is, it's a big task, but that's, I guess that's another option, is just. I don't wanna say a moratorium, but until we get the sewer plant operating, we really don't know, cover. Effectively gonna cover our operating expenses, we have user rates from our people that we're picking up, from people hooking up. There's two hundred and something that haven't hooked up yet, so that's happens over the next year. Um, so that's where the CIP money is gonna be used to kind of help offset some of that, so I. I don't wanna say we should wait a year, but I'm cautiously optimistic about how we should really bro. Not looking at any big expenditures over the next year.
So with, with this truck, so I, I understand where you're coming from, with, with this truck, it's about four months term length. Like when we order it, we sign something, we sign financing. They'll get to us in four months. So I mean, want us to go now, we could almost get it before the snow flies. Almost, um, but like, like, or, like, or on the fire side. Um, cause you know, we, you know, we do, we need some reviews, we need some new apparatus, um, for a tanker, it's about fifteen months. From the time that we sign to the time that we get delivery. For an engine, it's somewhere between twenty four and twenty five months, regardless of manufacturer. Pierce E one, Rosenbauer, doesn't matter. Um, the thing we don't need, we're not looking for a ladder truck, right, because that's like thirty eight months. And every time we wait, every month that we wait, and I don't, and this isn't, this is just how the market is right now, which is terrible. Every quarter that we wait, it's up three to four percent. So. For the first responder vehicle, it's good because we, you know, a state bid is a state bid, but for these other ones, you know, even though you have, you know, it's a. The consortiums that we're, that we belong to, they're still raising, you know, they're still raising them up.
But I guess, I'm gonna go back to the question. The money, this, let's just say a hundred plus thousand. That has no bearing on the plant coming online, or does it?
No, the plant can start, I mean, that's no problem, it's just a matter of the.
Because that, if we found. Or untangled, in Sunny's words, where that money is, we should be able to use it and not be impacting.
Or a portion of it.
Or a portion of it, just to get it, you know, or to payments, let's say.
Sure.
You know, we should be able to do it if we. Untangle where that money is sitting, cause we have it. So all this other stuff shouldn't have an impact on this, right?
But it's, it just, I think it just boils down to how much we wanna use of it. Uh, to ask to pay for it whole, I don't think that's really an option. That's, in my opinion, that's off the table.
Right, and I think what you said earlier, you know, the payments are manageable, if we can find that, those payments would be manageable.
Well, even if we just use it for the down payment.
Right.
That would be the best options to use some of that for the down payment.
Yeah, it's just a junkie that uh, buy all the rest of stuff for it.
Um. Well, I hope this information is gonna give you some ideas about where we're coming from the council. I work very closely with Sunny, uh, this is the same type of um. Above Public Works, Kane working with Sunny, uh, very closely, hand in hand, so we can, she can share her experiences and uh. At the same time, um. Coach you on what we're looking for, from a council's perspective as well, so. I do think the multiple bids is, quotes is effective and very time consuming, but it does. Uh, make sure it's a best buy for the taxpayers, I think that's important.
Sure.
And with that, just to reiterate, we would need it really before September, right, cause we have to have. We have to have our our temporary or our preliminary budget in place. And this is September.
Cause it can go up and it can come down. Yeah, I was wondering, can you get some information from the other places like Byron and and that, see where they got theirs? You know, to kinda get a a jump to, to get a comparison that there is for cost comparison.
Yep, I can do my best to get to your, we need to buy.
Yeah, we gotta have it by then, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess just keep in mind, the Byrns, the Stewartvilles, and even the Pine Islands are two times harder than we are. As far as population and funding of something like that, so.
That's, so that's a good point, so we're. What we should be doing as well, like Sunny alluded to earlier. Like last month, three quarters of our calls were in the township. Month before that, two thirds of them in the township. We would, I think we would. Do ourselves well to approach them about helping pay for this, pay for this apparatus. Cause it's getting used there as well. Something.
Right.
Maybe they, maybe they've got the cash to put the down payment down, and we don't have to worry about that for a year. You know, I don't know, it's definitely something to talk to them about.
Yeah, and like I say, we have, well, certainly have an agreement in place in terms of talking about raising those rates. Um, from the eight bells and across, you know, flat to uh with an escalator per year, but that. Um, I mean, think about how we can craft something in there too, in terms of equipment. Um. That's separate from this service operating, so.
I I see it, I see our budget as kinda two parts, operating, right, and we're around thirty thousand this year for the first responders. That includes the eighty five hundred dollars from the township, isn't enough, obviously, and then the other one is apparatus. Um, and obviously the apparatus are always. You know, what we spend on our operating. Even if you stretch it out how many years. You know, a truck is good for twenty five years, or we can't have it on.
Right, what is as important as the other?
Well, and as, and as we're crafting a budget too, then, you know, we can look at. Okay, we're expecting X amount from the township, we are potentially set aside. On an annual basis, much like we're talking about doing um in the general fund right now. A hundred thousand a year that's gonna go to C I P, do a, you know, stretch it that way, so that we're. Intentionally and thoughtfully planning for the future as well.
When we, when we worked with you guys last Friday, um. We what part that we didn't get to was for how much we need to save for the fire department and for the first responders for for apparatus. So I gave you a chart that has all of that, we just didn't, we just didn't get time to.
Cause it is so tiny and I.
So yeah, so so there's definitely a savings plan that we need to, or, you know, we call it a truck rotation plan, but it's it's a savings.
Great. Um, while you're up there, anything else on apparatus process, especially?
On the fireside too.
Fireside didn't have anything, this is just all.
Fireside, we're just, that guy was just a preapproval for U F S World Expo Conference. We're requesting sixty six hundred dollars and our packet is page sixty six going back to sixty. Sixty four, sixty five and sixty six. And yeah, for this particular, then we'll talk about the winter jackets. So you're asking for peer approval for this conference, which is in September seventeenth to twenty second in New Orleans. Well, I did, um, I look at the training budget and we're all aware of that, where you're at, right?
Yes.
And right now, you're, you had a budget for forty two hundred dollars, you picked up a lot of nice, good members over the year. Uh, you spent almost eight thousand dollars a year to date through August. And adding the sixty five hundred on top of that puts up to fourteen thousand five hundred. Um, which is like a two hundred and forty six percent increase on for your budget.
Right.
Um. How many weather should go?
Well. From when I started, so from, so there's, it's a longer story, when I started, you know, two and a half years ago, from now, we started with eight or nine people. So it's expensive to bring people on. Um, getting them a pager, a coat, a couple t-shirts, you know, keep them safe. You know, safety jackets, whatever, it's about thirteen hundred dollars to bring a person on. That doesn't include how much it costs to get them trained. Should they, you know, we had a couple people that just came on, um. One was a paramedic, so he already had all this training, so we didn't have to do anything. We just had someone come on, Mariah, who just um approved tonight, she already has her E M T, so we didn't have to pay for that. However, most people don't come in with that, to get your E M R, it's about five hundred dollars, to get your E M T, it's. Anything from a thousand to twenty five hundred, depending where you go, depending on what class you have. For an R N to E M T class, which is new, as of like last year or so, um, it's. Five hundred to eight or nine hundred dollars, depending on the fees. So bringing all those people on, we definitely saw a big increase in.
Wouldn't your employer pay for that? Wouldn't Mayo pay for that? Mayo, an R N to E M T? It doesn't, it's not required for jobs that pay.
Right, but it's kind of like a continuing. No. Home said? The home said people, they don't pay either, okay, just a thought.
So it, I mean, there's, there's a real, there's a very real cost about bringing, about bringing people on, you know, um. Training, training's a big part of it, you know, every year we spend fifteen hundred dollars total for. Training that comes out of a different part of our budget, not the training budget for what we call consortium. And through Southeast D M S, they can bring someone to train us five or five times a year, and that helps give us enough C E Us to. You know, get our, get our research, so that's actually not on the training budget, it's on a different line item. But yeah, so there's, so there's a real cost, um, in this next year's budget, we've asked to add a line item or. Conferences, education, continuing education, something like that, so this would be included in that. Um, this expo happens, I believe, every year or every other year. Um, it's nice to, from our perspective, it's nice, from an officer perspective, it's really nice to see people who want to go to things like this. Through the years, Dana said that we didn't have people that wanted to go and, you know, improve their skills and, and see, you know, the latest and greatest. Um, that the E M S world has to offer, um, and now we do. So if it's not this year, definitely next year.
Are you sending officers then, or are you sending membership?
Uh, it'd be two members and one officer.
Oh, the three people, just to follow those lines, are they, are those people that just started this year, or are they senior people with years of experience?
Well. Senior people, when you consider seniors. Not, 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 not age notwithstanding, um, we have, we're a very young department on both, on both sides. Um, we, we have probably seven or eight people that have been here. Three times in that, that have been here, so eight plus years, and then the rest of us have been here three or less.
I guess where I was going with my comment or just the information or question was just, if these three people are, they just started this year. Um, I would say, wait till next year so they can learn more about it, so when they do go. They understand exactly what they're being, and being exposed to.
Yep, all three of these people, one of them has been here over a year and the other two have been here almost three.
So they, so they could potentially come back and use this to train.
Yes, so.
Kinda train the trainer.
Kind of, you know, bring back ideas, bring back new equipment, ideas, things that we can put on our rigs. Um, different, you know, triage options, different, you know, care, patient care options that, you know, we don't have yet. And that's, and it's constantly changing, you know, with technology, so it's nice to see that.
My thought about this. Is that we, we probably need to develop a standardized. Conference attendance policy. For everyone, right, like, because fire might find. Might, might wanna go to or public works, I mean, I know that, and I know that you guys have gone to the, you know, the L M C conference and. Yeah, L M C conference and, you know, so there's, but I feel like maybe it needs to be a, something that we. Development have um. Some sort of standard for, um. You know, maybe a limit to the many, as many people, maybe a commitment after, like, we can't send you and then have you quit. You know what I mean, so there needs to be some, I just, I would feel more comfortable having a policy in place before we spend. This, because do, I think it's a great idea, but I also think, you know, fire might want the same opportunity, um. Council might want same opportunity, staff might want, I mean, and they do, but I, I don't know.
I think along with that, Dana, I agree, I think that, you know, when I, when I traveled for Mayo, when I traveled for Booz Allen, Hamilton, other. And and for Hormel, different companies I worked for, um, we had a per diem, right?
Right.
And and like, especially with Booz Allen, with federal contracting, you know, we, what, what city we were in dictated how much we could spend on food and on magic.
Hmm.
So that is definitely something that I would, I would really want to see as taxpayer, I would really wanna see movement in here.
Yeah, I, I would advocate for tying this to G S A.
Yeah.
Um, per diems, and I was gonna ask if that was your frame of reference in coming up with these numbers.
Yep.
Well, I just think by trying to turn around and come up with a policy in this one, you need to turn around, this is for what, September? You know, for us to turn around and try to get a policy and everything together by that time might be a little bit difficult, you have to. Make hotel reservations and flight reservations and that, um, so it's something that that I think needs to be looked at and addressed. The only thing I would be looking at, and I think that you probably get um. Uh, a discount for, for three to five, is that what it is for, for doing that, okay, what's the difference between the safety set two?
It's a hundred dollars or something like that, it's not much.
You know, so I mean, that's, that's one way to look at it too.
That's just the conference, that's not the flight or the hotel, you know, the hotel's the most expensive part.
No, I was just saying, if you said two versus three, you know, depending upon what you wanted to spend, you know, off of that, that's, that's all I was looking at.
Absolutely, in the, in the EMS and fire world, it's kinda funny how, how, how cheap conferences are, and what you're paying for is user travel, right? In the I T world that I live in, it's completely the opposite. To get into a conference is twenty five hundred bucks.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff I'm going through is, is seeing what's there and what's available as well too. Um, if I was just gonna make, you know, a comment would be maybe two versus three. You know, and and try to save a little bit that way, if you have two. If you're at a conference, you could kinda go different directions and pick up different things like you do in in Duluth. That there's different things offered and you need to have people to go to the different.
I start, yeah, it's, it's.
So if I'm looking at page ninety three.
I know, there's, 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 there's no budget.
Right.
So that's what, that's the harsh reality of it, there's no money in the budget.
Cause these numbers, I mean, what do you?
Where do we, where do we?
You have two hundred dollars left in your budget and this was through July, we're talking five months yet.
Right.
So.
Where's two hundred, I see.
Well, I'm looking at the budget for first responders, it's twenty one, seven thirty five and. Um, year to date spent is twenty one five.
The bottom line, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you know I'm all about the numbers, right?
Good, I, I, I want you to be all about the numbers, Tony.
I, and I like, I like though that this is an annual conference, and I think. Um, we definitely ought to include. Um, as, as we're looking at more revenues for your department, um, we're also looking at. Those additional expenditures, certainly on the training side, and that would include this kind of thing. And I'm gonna say again, from Friday night, I very much appreciate that you're adding some more detailed accounts. So it's gonna be helpful for you guys and for us as well.
I don't remember how much we added to the conference line item that we were hoping to add to, I think it was maybe.
Was it six?
I just wanna make sure that we, we don't end up in the same place next year where we onboard, you know, onboarding people is a good thing. We don't wanna punish our current members because we added more people, you know, like for our current members. We've done no training at all beyond our bare minimum requirement to keep our certification, so. We're not building anything off of that, we're not getting any new experience, we're not, you know, there's a lot that conferences offer that. Our current members aren't getting because we're training new people, and we don't wanna punish our existing people because we get new people, so.
So to that point, you know, you can't just keep hiring if you don't have the money. You know what I mean, that's just reality, I mean, it's awesome that people are wanting to volunteer, but the reality is, it's not a, it costs money to bring them on. So you, you just can't do that, we are an, an unending slotted money to be able to throw at you.
Right, and, and we, and we, we see that, we agree with that, that's twenty four people, we're, we're sitting, we're sitting really good.
And they're so, yeah, they're.
Three years, three years ago, our, our call percentage was twenty percent.
Mm hmm.
We were going on twenty percent of the calls that we were. Today, we're over ninety percent.
Yeah.
We're, we are not, we are no longer doing a disservice to our citizens. We are, we are there and we are responding, we're helping.
Good for you, and the city's growing.
And the city is growing.
That's a very positive thing, if there is, for the city as well to have that, I mean, it's a selling point for us, you know.
You know, when we look at our historical numbers and our historical trends and stuff, it's hard to. Put a stop to hiring yet, just because we've seen a lot of turnover and a lot of, you know, historical. Suffering, maybe isn't quite the right word, but, so, I mean, we, we're broaching the. Thoughts about, like, what do we do and when do we stop, but at the same time, we just got here in the last.
So that retain, so that retainment piece is what you need to focus on now, right, like, why are we losing people and.
Gosh, this could.
Conferences can be, but also training in house, which I know you are doing it, you know, um. Again, conferences can be if you have money, which you don't, so I don't know what to say to that, you know what I mean? That's the harm. That's a really tough sell, and it's only a conference for three of the members, not, and you're saying you've got twenty four. What does that really bring to the other twenty four, maybe there's other, maybe there's other ways. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out how you can.
And I'm totally, I'm totally okay with us, you know, tabling it until next year and will we have it in our budget? But, you know, I think, I think this discussion is good because, you know, I, I like it that our membership is looking to get better.
Right.
And is, you know, is looking for this, instead of a membership that doesn't show up to meetings.
It's awesome that you have to even think about it, right?
This, this is a good thing, right?
Yeah, it's a good thing.
It's, it's a great thing.
You're doing the right thing, you know, I just, even if you cut back to two people. That's equivalent to your whole year's budget for training, so I guess with that, I do.
We know what it costs now, so we can get it in our budget.
We do, and we, and we have a line item for conferences or continuing education, so, cause we want to itemize it better. Cause I, when I, when people come to me and say, I wanna go to this conference, I can say, well, we've already used our conference budget.
Right.
And the, and the good thing is, we're, we're in budget season, so there. As we go through budget, there's things we're gonna likely look at and compromise on. So we can get people to training, cause it is important that we train people.
The good thing is, you are part of that consortium, and I'm there all the, you guys have m- major training nights, I mean, it's a lot. You know, you guys do a great job.
There's three topics at least that they cover when they come.
Right, those are.
Especially for volunteer.
Yeah.
It's huge, and I appreciate that.
No, hitting ninety percent of the calls too says a lot, and then the more you do that, the more that Rochester. Relies on you when they call, that they know that you're gonna be out there doing it and and helping out. And and again, I, I, I'm back to the township, which is the majority of what you have for your calls. Which is the majority of what you have for your calls that are going on, um. And I think it's a great idea to turn around and try to get some capital out of them as well. You know, uh, because that's where we're doing the service to help out that much, um.
And I think if we go to them with the numbers. I think it won't hurt.
So with great reluctance on um. And this is not meant to be a. Um, this approval of the training that you guys are doing, but I just feel like this year is, we're in a position that we really. I make a motion to deny the travel uh for twenty-twenty-three to the conference. In a second.
One second, Patrick here.
You've done all the right things. It's just a matter of being able to timing of it and um. Being physical responsible with our schedule that we have and budgets and and uh. It's a great learning tool for next year, so.
We had another town come right north of us here, that little Indian reservation. They're gonna be, that's by now, but it's gonna be our no-go. Get called, the whole calls out there.
Wanna help our budget too.
Any other comments?
They claimed they're gonna start building it shortly, so.
Seeing other comments, all favors, taking, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's. We will deny the travel this year, so.
Understand.
Thanks for your time. Next item is approval or F Y I. Let's take care of. Hey, um. Page three. The pair of H. I K or no K.
Wait, we didn't do jackets.
No, they were.
It was uh.
Oh, God, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's within my circle. You're like, Dana, shut up. Just make sure I get it to approve.
That's the, just here for you on your desk. Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three. Something to overlook given that earlier this spring, but that's fine.
Yes, there are typically three things that gold rush laws, um.
Right away.
Gathering permit and this one. Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Second.
I'm answer discussion.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Call to the role.
Mayor Ankorst.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Elsa Bergner.
Aye.
Elsa Richards.
Aye.
Elsa Crowe. Thank you.
Root. Steve. Unfinished business, uh, update. Carl, when you're asking for some update, I guess.
Uh, where are we at? Can I have the attorney start proceeding on it? I mean, the neighbors shouldn't have to look at that mouth.
I agree.
That we had a building inspector go out.
Yeah.
That's all then.
My report is the same as before. I met with the county on site. Um, I continue to work with the owner and his friends to clean up. There is, um, obviously, uh. Differing views on on what progress is or not. I feel I'm making progress. The neighbors. Not so much, so.
I don't see if anybody's walked up and looked at any of that property. I want one next to my house. I want one that environments running in and out from underneath the house, roofs caving in. I mean, if you wanna see that, have so, it looks similar to it. I mean, we had one not near as bad as that. Six years ago, Mike handled it and we carried it way into court. And stuff, we spent a lot of money. Making him clean it up and fix it. And this one's not fixable. I mean, this should be literally tore down.
I didn't. More either, but he fixed it.
Yeah.
I mean, he caused a lot of that expense. We went to court maybe eight times. It should have been one time, but I did end up doing it. And that did save the money in the city in the end, because the city didn't have to tear it down, which was what we were gonna do and we were gonna have to pay. This, when you do that, you pay, just so everybody's clear. You know?
Right, but you can recover it on the.
In theory, in theory, don't count on it. But in theory, yeah, I mean, we can, you can charge them. They don't pay. You assess the property for the cost. And then you get, you collect it as a, an assessment. And then that'll depend on if there's any money, if they have a mortgage on the property, for example. Or other liens that are superior to your lien, you you're not gonna get anything back. So just so we're clear on that, I always give that disclaimer I've done. I've got like, uh, this has been the year hazardous building, I've done tons of them. And I think it's COVID. They've, nobody was doing them in COVID. And now. They're backed up. And it's all these cities, like, what was it? We got three going. Didn't want to go down to Winona, I got. So if you wanna move forward, I just want everyone to be clear. You know, you can do this. If you have to go in and do the work, it could be quite expensive, um. Example, the one we did in Winona had asbestos. And so that jacks the cost way up, cause they gotta put the. When you tear it down, they gotta put the debris. In a landfill, and I gave this disclaimer, but in that case, there was a fire at the property and they really had no choice. I mean, it had to come down. I mean, it was not. Safe for anybody, um, and it was like a shotgun house in the middle of town, you know, a dense, dense population, so. Just so you're clear, we can do it. You gotta pay out of pocket for the building assess, you know, building officials that you have to pay or your. Um, any inspections you have to do from professionals, attorneys' fees, court filing fees, four hundred plus dollars. Service fees, you gotta be the sheriff to serve the documents on the people. So there's, you know. You know, legal fees can be anywhere from two to ten thousand, depending on how bad it gets. Um, you know, and then the. Building official fees, inspection fees, just whatever they charge and then. The big, but those are pale in comparison if you have to tear it down. That's the big cost. So then you got a part of this is you gotta get an estimate. You know, so all of those expenses will, you can charge it back to the homeowner, but if they don't have any money and don't pay it. And then you assess it against their property, no different than if you cut somebody's weeds. It's not cutting their weeds. You can assess those costs, and I think we do that here for a couple of properties. You know, you you might never see any money back, just so we're clear. I'm not saying don't do it. I just wanna, you understand.
So is the property, is the intention of the owner to clean up the property? To make the, it habitable or not?
No.
Good question.
The, the intent is to. Um. The intent is to retain the treasured pieces that are in the property.
Is this property?
They know that it's, they know that it ultimately will.
Has any, has anybody looked at the property taxes on it? Are they paid?
Yeah.
They're paid?
Yeah, there ain't been none.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's no way on the property well worth more than.
So, I mean, there's the whole step I go through.
And Mary Ellen don't have a lien on it.
All the steps we go through. So you have to serve, if you do a hazardous building action, you have to serve the lien holders of record and all owners of record. So we have to do a title search to make sure we, if there's any mortgages or other liens. You know, so.
So I guess what I'm asking, is this the direction we're headed in? Is this the direction we're headed? Just, we're waiting until they, I'm kinda confused, like. Is it eventually, is that what's going to happen?
I'm confused about that, too. Is the goal here to rip the whole house down or is the goal, cause I I looked at the pictures, there was a hole in the roof.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, you've got it.
For the large, I bet the neighbors aren't complaining about that. I think they're complaining about the yard out front and all the trash.
I mean, it's all. I guess raccoons are coming in and out of there too. So the neighbors aren't too happy with that type of stuff that's going on, so.
The other question I had was, is there really treasures there? Is, is this, is this a situation where? It's endless treasures and it's never. I mean, I, it's hard for me to know, to advise them what to do if I don't really know what the situation.
Well, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say though, too, to that point, the other thing is, is it even safe for anyone to go in there and get their treasures out? I mean.
Well, that's their own property, so it's not up for us to.
No, I know. I'm ju- I'm just saying, safety-wise. I don't know who, who would go in there.
I don't, I don't think any of us would walk in.
No.
What, it's private property, we shouldn't be walking in that property.
Wouldn't watch it.
So it's only doing the right thing to try to work with them, cause eventually the cheapest way the city can do this.
I think we've got six years in, I think it's time.
I want to hear what Mike has to say about the cheapest way to do it. That's what we need to know.
cheapest way to do it is to get them. To either fix it themselves, which they probably are not, not that they don't want to. They probably can't. I mean, some people just, they're old, they don't have the ability, capability. But if you make friends with them, if you can do that, then the best, next best thing, the next cheapest thing is to get them to consent. So we don't have to go to court or anything. They just sign a simple contract. It's called a consent to assess agreement, and they just basically consent to allowing the city. To go on to the property to clean it for them and then charge them, but we don't have to do a legal process. That, that's the next best.
I think that's the relationship studies trying to establish.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna dive bomb it at the same time. I see your point. I mean. The treasures could be, I mean, it could go.
I'd like to make a motion that we. And might move on with condemning this place or send her letters, whatever. Cause I mean, for six years, she's been getting all this heat about it and we get nothing done.
So we did some interesting things in that Winona case. We had, that I had never done before. We got storage units rented. And the people. Cause we were gonna tear it down and they weren't gonna consent to anything. It was a contentious thing and the guy was in jail for four months. It was a long story, but. In the end, we just said, well, we'll rent these storage units for you and we'll pay for it. We won't assess that cost and we'll move your. We will, and we had movers there and we moved their stuff into the storage unit so that we can move forward quicker. And money well spent. So there might be other avenues to help her save the, whatever the treasures may be. I don't know what they are. It's just like pictures and heirlooms or family things or what, but, you know, there's ways we can work with them.
And is it? The end, I just keep thinking our end game here is. For us to take the property and condemn the home. Is that what?
Not condemn, tear it down.
Tear it down.
Or or not, is it just, are we gonna patch the roofs?
Yeah, I guess I'm super, I just wanna know the end game, like what's the?
Me too.
Well. My understanding and and this, these are, you know, some of these conversations that I have are. Are confidential as well, you know, I'm not, I'm not interested in airing on tape. Necessarily to her neighbors, what, what my, what the strategy is on this, cause we are talking about real property about, um. And and that's, that's careful, so.
Part of it is a legal determination. It's not up for just, I need to say, it's kinda like. Our, our building, you can't, let me put it this way, you can't tear a house down just cause it's a little bit ugly. You know, it has to be a hazardous property under Minnesota law, under statutory definition of hazardous building or property. So to me, that's not a decision for me to make and it's not a decision for you to make. To me, that's a decision for the building official to make. Who has a licensed building official to write an opinion that says, in my expert opinion, based on my knowledge of the Minnesota State Building Code, et cetera, et cetera. This property must be torn down, or if it is not torn down, the following must be done. And this is what happened in Tilford. I've never seen somebody salvage one like he did, not even one time. He's the only one. When we give them those options, usually the options to fix it up are so expensive, prohibitively expensive. For what the property will be worth, that they just tearing it down is realistically the only option, if that makes sense. So that, but those, I mean. I I think, I know that the Olmsted County did a. Investigation, but have, has our building official just on the, is the building dangerous or not? Has, have we done that?
No, cause I, we have a meeting with them tomorrow. And again.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thank you, go ahead.
Well, well, I wanna be just very, very clear too, that I am very, um. Aware of, uh, council's concern. I, I can appreciate their, um, sensitivity to this fact. That it has gone, you know, for years, um. But at the same time, I, I feel like I really am making progress with her and I, um. It's just not my number one priority, cause we have some other things. That's not to diminish the value of, of your concern and and what you wanna ultimately do, but I, um. If, if you want to, and I've mentioned this before, if you wanna set a deadline. I, I am open to working with that, um, because I can.
If Mike sends her a letter, giving her a deadline to have it done. And.
Well, I don't, I mean, here's what I would do. If you haven't had a building official actually inspect the inside of the property. What I would do is not send any letter. I would just go to her and have her consent. Cause there's that, I saw that hole in the roof. We could get a search warrant. I just got a search warrant in Lewiston. We went and searched. We can get a search warrant, we need to do it. But I would just, if you have a good rapport with her, that's a bunch of work too, by the way. So especially since you don't have a police department here to do the warrant for, for me. What I would do is just go to her and just express that the council has concerns and wants to figure out what a reasonable deadline would be. And in order for them to do that, they have to have our city officials inspect the property to determine the, the quality or lack of quality of the property. Would, would they allow her, them to come and schedule a time to go do that? If she says yes to that, consents, then ask her for the key so that she doesn't have to be there. They don't live there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so ask her for the key and then schedule, um, the deputy sheriff that you have, just to be civil standby. Ask them for civil stamp, what's known as civil standby, and then your building official is C M S, I believe, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then just schedule a time to do the inspection and create a report. And then after we get the report, we can bring that back to council and you can read the report and decide what you wanna do. That's what you should do.
Can I ask a question? You said Olmsted County official came. What does that, what was that about?
They, they, it's in the packet that we had two months ago that you put that in there. That was a report.
But why them instead of our building official?
Well, it was. I think it had to do with, it was the health department based on like the animals on the outside, wasn't it? Not the, not the building, what I'm talking about is the building.
Whether it's.
So that's like two different things. You need both. You need somebody on the outside and then.
I've never seen a county health inspector come to a property. That's a first for me. So is that what it was? Was it like a health inspector?
Well, one of the, one of the neighbors.
Oh.
Called, and so then they looked back with me and, um, and I worked with. We, we sent a letter, um, telling her that I would be there with, um, people from the county and, um. And we had a deputy there as well.
The other idea I have here is just bifurcating the outside and the inside. I mean, is the, are the treasures all on the inside? Or there are treasures on the outside? Cause I mean, maybe she'd consent and just.
We don't know.
Maybe she would just consent to letting us.
I think the consent is, is positive.
You just go up there and look at it once you'll.
I saw the pictures, but I mean, if she would just let us clean the outside, but save the building for a bit, that would make, make the neighbors happy to see some progress, that the outside's all cleaned up. There's no.
But that's, that's where I'm saying, I see progress on the front and on the side from both streets. Um, and you're saying it all got moved to the back, but.
You just long enough. I mean, Tilford wasn't near as bad as that place.
The next step, well, and what we did in Tilford is the next step here is to do that inspection. So before, so maybe just do that and then. See what that says and we'll talk about it next month if you wanna.
I think we need monthly updates. Uh, I think we need to set a date.
And I think we need to have a building inspector go in and.
And do that. I'm not filing anything with any district court with that one. I'll just tell you.
I mean, it's, I, I think it does, the bottom line is to get in and get that part taken care of, I mean. Have them go in.
Be nice about it, though. Just ask her for consent and just say, this, the city council is getting a lot of complaints. They need to. They need to assess where the property is at and or do that, we need to inspect the inside. Would you please let us do that?
Yeah.
And then a lot of times they consent, more than half the time. You know.
So, um, a big crowd motion died for like a second. So we'll, um, proceed with getting a consent.
I second for Mike to send her a letter to.
Well, I I'll send a letter, but I don't, I think we should, I think we need to figure out what the demand, cause the letter, here's what's in the letter. The letter regurgitates what's in the building officials' report, that's the problem, and so.
We need that first.
We need that first before I can even send the letter, so anyway, so.
I think that's, that's a good step, then we're moving in, she knows we're serious about what's going on, when we do that. Have a building inspector go in and take a look at it.
Well, we can't keep kicking it down the road.
No, but I don't think we are, I think like that, we're, we're doing this. Well, no, but we're moving ahead pretty.
From the time I started with Hilfords, it took a year for us to finish it, from the time I first got involved, that was like on top of the, whatever, however many years.
But that wasn't a person that was willing to work with you either, so that, you know.
Well, I I mean, she is willing to work with Sonny and that, she's polite to Sonny, but hey, there's a fine line between, especially when you get into the situations, I don't wanna.
Doing that actually.
Put, put labels on it, but like, we've had hoarding situations too, I don't know if that's what this is, but I've, I've dealt with that before. And that's a whole other animal, you can order all the stuff you want, you ain't fixing that. Now, I'll just tell you that right now, if that's what, I don't think that's what this is, because she doesn't live there.
It's a private piece of property, you're probably crossing the park.
This person doesn't live there, so this is unique in that way, they don't live there, and so I think, you know, just be nice and polite and cooperative and, but we need to get the.
Ristoran villages don't bring no more, they won't let her bring that, more than is that, but.
Yeah.
All right, let's, uh, move on, and I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thirty minutes, actually. What's the action on the financials? Oh, it's only considered, you know, sorry. Any other comments? All the favors, signify by saying aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Second. Thank you. All favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Your turn is nine and one.